Nobody in the waiting room, right?
There's no one. All right. Well, this budget meeting work session of the Livingston City Commission is called the order. May we have a roll call, please?
Chair Holman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Friedman is not currently present. Commissioner Maybe.
Here.
And Commissioner News.
Here. All right, we're gonna pass it over to the staff. Go ahead.
All right, thank you ma'am chair. Let me share my screen. I'm sorry that I didn't get this guys, this out to you guys earlier. I really thought I had sent it out last week, but I obviously did not. Uh, so. Let me share where we're at. So tonight, we're just talking, usually we call it enterprise fund, but it actually includes debt service funds, the capital plan, the enterprise funds, the permanent funds. And there's one more type that I forget off the top of my head, the special revenue funds. This is our set of goals and where we are as far as projections go, as far as the different funds that we'll be talking about tonight, at least the major ones, and left off the ones that don't really have goals associated with them, such as liability insurance, a few of the other ones. You can see we're doing really well on the ambulance fund. That's because of the mill levy that passed, and that will continue to have hopefully a high reserve, at least for the initial few years. If it works out like the last mill levy did, we'll have high reserves during the first half. Those will start to dwindle, and then at the end, we'll be eating into the reserves to maintain, and then it'll be time to look at a new mill levy. Dispatch, we've never tried to, this is the second year that we've tried to have any reserve in dispatch before we were kind of treating it as a, as a no need to have a reserve fund. We are gonna shoot to continue to up that slowly, but because it's with the county, we'll have to do it slowly over time to start reaching it up. But we do have a reserve of about 5.7%. Light maintenance is still a healthy reserve. Street maintenance is just below, but still a fairly healthy reserve. Sewer, it's at 97%, which is approaching the 100% goal. Solid waste at 19% is actually pretty good because solid waste was running in the red for a long, long time. So to have any reserve in solid waste is, I think, an accomplishment. And then water, we're getting close to 100% as well at 95%. Again, for those funds, especially sewer and water, that is only the operational reserve, which means it doesn't include the capital. So it's not, you know, 100% of the million or whatever we spend in it. It's only 100% of, or in this case, 97 to 95 of the operational costs, so personnel mainly, as well as like electricity and utilities for some of the other functions down there, such as the water reclamation facility. We didn't change anything significantly as far as accounting goes this year. Last year, we did the changes to liability. We did change sewer billing, but that's not really a change to the budget. It's just a change to how we, we charge residents for the sewer, getting the the minimum charge if they, if they have any usage or not. So that's, that's new, but it didn't change the budget, just how we collect the money. And then, as we go through tonight, you'll see the, the rate changes proposed for the funds as follows. Sewer at 3%, street maintenance at 25%, but there's a caveat with that. That's the increase in the revenue. So that's about, it was about a million dollars. So now we're talking about about 1.25 or a million, 250. But that is not a change to the rate because we added significantly more properties. In this case, Green Acres is, all of those properties were added in that will start paying street maintenance. If we didn't raise the cost of the fund, I'm trying to figure out the best way to say this, and added all those properties, the cost per resident would actually have gone down, and actually did go down last year, I believe, cost per resident. This brings that cost back up to where people will be paying approximately the same, perhaps slightly more. But we do need the extra money for the additional roads, and there's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done, especially in Green Acres, and Shannon can speak to that later if you'd like. So it's a significant increase in the fund amount, but probably not a significant increase in individual bills. Paige, do you have any idea what it, what it is per?
I forgot I was gonna get you that information. So right now, a standard 7,000 square foot lot pays about $215 in their street assessment. Without adding additional properties, this would increase that to 271, but obviously it won't be that much since we're adding additional properties to this and, and larger lots of that to this particular increase.
Yeah, and that is one thing, because the Green Acres lots are usually larger than the average sized lots in the rest of the town, with some exceptions like Lockleaven. They will, they will pay more than a standard person downtown would. So they'll eat up more of this increase than if they were the same size. And we can talk about that later. Light maintenance, no change to that. Water's at 3.3%. And then the green waste isn't really a change to the rate. The rate before it was a free service, now it's just an opt-in service for $6 a month, which is a great service. I opted in for $6 a month, and I already love it. So if you haven't, I would. Any questions on just this basic summary before we dive into the funds themselves? All right, if not, we'll go on to the actual funds. We'll do each section. We'll go through the, the summary, and then if you want to dive into the line items for that section, we will, and we can answer any questions as we go. The first section is special revenue funds. These are in the order of the fund number, so it's the 2,000 funds. Comprehensive liability, you can see we basically got rid of this and moved it into the individual funds, but there's still some, some money left over in there that's holding that, that fund open. So that's not very exciting.
Are you meaning to screen share?
Oh, I'm just meaning to screen share. I did, and then I undid, and then I didn't redo. There you go. So there's a, the comprehensive liability. The library fund is just on there for reference. We don't actually control how much library gets or how the money's spent. We're just the pass-through for that particular money, and that's set by the number of mills the county and the city both pay towards the library. But there's the library budget, if you'd like to look at it. And then we have dispatch. Dispatch is basically funded by both the county and the city at half the rate. We pay for it out of the general fund. We already talked about this amount when we did the general fund workshop. But as far as it goes, you can see almost all the cost in dispatch is personnel. And as a 24/7 service, those personnel costs are always high. So about 700,000 in personnel, 150 roughly in operations cost, which is for the computer systems, the phone systems, the radio systems. So that's broken down in that category. Obviously, it's almost all public safety money, and you can see we did not, again, not a huge reserve in this fund, but it's about 49,000 when we're done. We're spending just slightly more, or just slightly less than we expect to bring in in revenue. This is URA. Again, the URA is kind of quite a ways ahead of where we expected them to be at this point, as far as tax revenue goes. So we, they do, or they should bring in around $460,000 in, in revenue, and we've planned for about $460,000 in expenses. Again, very small operations costs. It's almost all capital, and then the debt service, which is the debt service where we bonded for the street projects. Most of this capital is for, again, downtown projects, I believe. Shannon, is it alleys this time? Or is it the continuation of Second Street? I forget which one we were doing. Did I lose you?
Sorry, I was muted. Um, no, we're, we're taking, well, we're finishing up Second Street, but we are not doing a downtown project this next budget year.
That's right. So the, the capital in this one was just for the Second Street? Is that correct?
Mike, the capital in this or specific, the specific projects that we identified were the curb and gutter.
That's right.
Where Gray's General Store is, and then Skate Park Landscaping at 5.5, or 5, 5,500. The rest of it is where, even though it's not necessarily capital in nature, we don't know what the URA is gonna decide to do with that discretionary money, and so we just put it into capital, even though it's not necessarily project-specific, because they may put it towards something that would qualify as capital outlay. Usually that money ends up going to their facade program or other grant programs that they maintain.
Right. So if you're not familiar with Gray's General Store, it's the old Debo's Pawn. They have that, like, half angle parking area that's not to code, and when people park there, they stick out in the street quiet ways, and it's not, it's not to our standards. So we're looking at improving that by, by closing that off and making that all, all parallel parking there, and maybe adding some bike parking. I don't think we designed it yet, but that's what it's budgeted for. Permissive health insurance, again, this is just what we use to pay the health insurance premiums for the city. Slight increase from last year, but actually not as bad as it has been in previous years. And again, we don't really keep a balance in that fund. That fund is only to fund health insurance each year. CDBG revolving loan fund, so this is where Katie and the, is managing our revolving loan fund. Again, we never know what they're going to give out in loans, but we plan for them to, to do that, and then we move on. Impact fees, you can see with the increase in the impact fees, we do expect to get quite a bit more. Most of our impact fees are right now, we're looking for, again, public works because they get most of the impact fees for water and sewer projects. There are some public safety initiatives that we are spending. We talked about some of those in the general fund, as far as using to offset costs and police vehicles, and buy some fire equipment, and then some of the culture and recreation, some of the parks, fees that are going towards those projects as well.
Mike, just a quick correction on that. It's transportation impact fees that goes into this. Water and sewer impact fees actually go directly to the water and sewer funds.
That's right.
A big driver in this is fire and transportation impact fees.
Right. So these are the street funds.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Paige, so like, when the impact fees roll in, because you just named a bunch of different sort of buckets, is it, like, for one development, there's this chunk of money, and some of it goes to water, some of it goes to sewer, and then, like you said, public works, like transportation, which apparently is public works largely. Is it like one fee, and then it gets broken down into categories on the city side?
Yes.
I'm just trying to remember.
If you go to actually the, the line item portion of it, and you go to page 28, you can see the breakdown of that anticipated revenue.
Thanks. I know we went over this. I know we went over this when we talked about impact fees, but it's been a while. Thank you.
I have a question as well. Michael, what did you say, culture and recreation? What is that?
That's the parks fees. And when we get to the line item, I think it's split out what is anticipated to spend on there. Do you remember off the top of your head, Shannon, where we were spending the parks money?
I don't, right off the top of my head. Yeah, we'd have to look at the line item. I'm hoping that Paige has those in the notes.
The only thing in parks right now is the pedestrian bridge study.
Oh, that's right.
Was that 27? I don't recall that.
Yeah, some of that was 20. So some, it's culture and rec, so it's parks and then the rec fees as well.
Okay, well, I'll wait till it's broken up.
No significant changes to light maintenance. That's pretty much the same every year. It's just operating costs. Not much exciting there. It's pretty much the same as last year. Street maintenance, again, this is, we are bringing in more revenue this year with that increase that we were talking about. And the other, the other financing sources here, is that, is that gas tax, Paige? You're still on mute? Yes, yes, it is. Okay.
Gas tax, no. That 2,500 is more street cut permits. Gas, gas taxes in its own fund.
No, I'm talking to 340,000.
That is, remember, we had talked about financing a, an excavator and,
Right.
Is that right, Shannon? It was a piece of equipment that we had talked about financing. So that's potentially revenue, basically loan revenue.
Which is why it's under other financing sources.
Yeah, and then the $40,000 is actually their, their portion of the permissive health insurance levy that gets transferred into this fund.
So you can see when we break this down, again, capital here is the most, but it's closely followed by personnel and benefits, because it takes a lot of time and effort for all of the street projects that we're talking about, whether that's grading or repairing, or whatever we're doing with the streets. There's a lot of people out there that have to, to get that done. Then mostly it goes to public works. And where you have exactly the same reserve as we had before. Sidewalks, again, this is if people put sidewalk repairs on their property taxes. So it just depends on what happens through the year, but we don't budget anything out of it. This is business improvement district. Again, that's their, that's their budget, which you already looked at, I believe. And they decide how it's spent.
It's actually just a pass-through. So we collect the revenue, and then we cut them a check, and they control everything after that.
And then park improvement, these are, I think in this one, that's the revenue. No, that's an expenditure. So that's just what's left in the, the park improvement fund at this point. Law enforcement joint equipment, that's also one of those that just sits out there and doesn't change unless we do a purchase that falls through this particular fund. There's the gas tax that we were talking about. So it was about 340.
Sorry, but last page, what kinds of purchases would fall through this particular fund?
I don't think we've used it since I've been here. Paige, do you know what kind of, what that money's out there for?
I don't. Dale knows a little bit more about this, and it's actually not all our money. I believe the sheriff's office participates in this as well, and there's very specific things that qualify. So it's one of those where every year we budget the, basically the fund balance that's still there in the event that they have any sort of qualifying purchases. But to my knowledge, there really isn't anything at this point. So it's, it's kind of one of those funds that just sits out there and doesn't do anything.
Yeah, we budgeted for it every year I've been here. I don't think we've ever spent any money out of it.
It just accrues interest.
So is it like one of those placeholders that would be very frustrating if it did not exist, and suddenly you had to make a purchase specifically joint between these two departments?
It was probably grant revenue or something that they had received at some point, and I just, I don't know the history behind.
I don't think we can absorb this one because it has to be spent only on those qualifying purchases. So we can't just absorb and let it roll into the general fund. Kind of like the FEMA money that's out there. When you get FEMA money, it has to stay in the FEMA account until it's gone. So again, there's a gas tax, about 316,000. Almost all that's on operations this year. Again, it mostly goes to the street department. Again, not much change in that particular fund. All right, so here's the line items. Again, comprehensive liability, we closed out. Library, we'll skip unless you have some burning questions on it, but we don't really do that. Dispatch, again, we're, we're, here's our transfer from the general fund, so about 394,000. County contract payment, also 394,000. So there's your financing sources for dispatch. And I don't think, almost all of it's expenditure in this, is personnel in this, these expenditures. Remember renewal district, again, it'll depend on what they, they spend on, but that one sidewalk project. And skate park landscaping, there you can see that.
I'm having a hard time keeping up on my screen. Can you tell me what page number you're on, please? Okay, thanks.
Is where we currently are.
Thank you.
Permissive health insurance on page 24. Again, that's just to pay the health insurance, so no new information in the line items really. CDD revolving loan on page 26. Again, that'll just depend on what gets put out in loans. Impact fees, so you can see here what we anticipate to bring in per category, in this case, for the, this isn't the water sewer, but it's the other, other items. So we have police impact fees where we think we're gonna get around 12,000, fire and EMS, 107,000, parks and recreation, 145,000, and transportation, 176,000. So that gives you your total of about 442,000 with about $1,500 in interest. So that is highly speculative based on what developments come through and who builds. So that's our, that's our best guess at what we think we're gonna get for impact fees, but it could vary significantly depending on what happens in the, in the building, building sector as we go forward. Law enforcement, $35,000. Capital outlay, that was for vehicle. Fire, again, 11,000. That was just straight up fire equipment. Here's the street department. We're looking at 350,000 for ADA improvements, growth policy and transportation plan engineering, active transportation priorities, and then the curb and gutter repairs at 75,000, for a total of 350,000. And then the parks department, pedestrian bridges, 20,000. Do you know what makes up the rest of that, 68,000, Paige?
I do. It's on the capital sheet that we created, but there's the Green Acres Park gazebo, Mayor's Landing Improvement, Park Master Plan Improvement Priorities, Skate Park Landscaping, and then, of course, the pedestrian engineering.
Can we ask questions on this page yet?
Sure.
Yeah, that, just, whatever page we're on, just stop and, and ask your questions.
Okay. Um. So what is the 75,000 for growth policy and transportation plan engineering?
I think we have just budgeted it, assuming that we're gonna have to do it, but we don't know exactly what it's for yet. Do we have anything specific in mind for that, Shannon?
Well, so there's been some concern during the public process with the growth policy about the North Side Transportation Plan. So it was to look at possibly, or having some revenue to revisit that, or any other transportation recommendations that come out of the growth policy.
Thanks.
Or it can also be recommendations that come out of the active transportation plan, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So the growth policy and transportation plan engineering come from the growth policy or the active transportation plan that's in the works? And then the active transportation priorities would also be, I assume, or you can just tell me, so I don't have to assume, that 100,000?
That would be up for any of the priorities that came out of the study, actual projects.
Okay, okay, thanks.
We, we need to be careful because the commission just signed a letter of support with a financial commitment for our transportation alternative project on the B to Second Street that we would put our 13.42% out of transportation impact fee. So that, whatever portion is necessary based on the engineering and the construction of that project, if we get the grant, would be taken out of that 100,000 for the active transportation priority.
Okay. Thanks. I, for one, will probably need to be reminded again when that time comes, because it's like a lot of moving parts. Thanks, Shannon. And then the pedestrian bridge, is that talking about the bridge over the Yellowstone that we talked about near Mayor's Landing?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Light maintenance, no really any additional information on light maintenance on page 30 and 31. There are some LED retrofits in there, and some infrastructure in Northern Lights Road. Street maintenance, we're at page 32. Excuse me, there you go. Again, this is just basic the revenue of the special assessment. That is the, the street maintenance district, that's where all the revenue comes from. Then the 300,000 is for loans for the equipment we talked about earlier. And we have that, should be down here. So here's some more. I don't know how much of the, the line items you want to go into. Salaries and wages, obviously, are always large. We do have some TD&amp;H, street engineering, professional services that we budgeted for. Partial of the, the upgrade to the Star Road facility, the public works, or the streets portion, as we improve that facility. $49,000 for tires. I always love those kind of line items. Again, street department, this is where you see most of the salaries and wages coming in at 313,000, and then the rest of this is personnel costs. And this is the roller and the plower where we had the loan. Is that correct, Paige? Yes. And Shannon, do you want to give a quick explanation of what that equipment is?
Yeah, so we're looking at doing a lease on, to replace or upgrade our 1994 grader. And those that have alley access, I think, appreciate the grading work that we do every spring, so it's an upgrade to that. We have a 1992 loader. We have a 2007 loader. So we are gonna purchase a new loader, and then we're one of the few commi- communities, if not the only community our size in the state, that actually has their own chip sealing program that we do ourselves, and we're gonna buy a pneumatic roller that not only would help with compacting the gravel in our alleys, but help with the chip sealing process and rolling all the chips into the tar for that. And then looking at, yet again, an additional plow for, for winter maintenance. And unfortunately, all this equipment is very, very expensive, but we have a, a street department foreman and crew that take very good care, and that's why we're able to still use a loader that was, or a grader that was new in 1994. But this will dramatically increase our level of service of being able to do projects ourselves.
I just want to say that that's amazing, that that equipment has lasted so long. And that sounds like a good newspaper story when the new one comes in, or if the new one comes in, of how long the Livingston employees can keep that equipment going. I suppose you probably use that too, Shannon, not just for alleys, but all those gravel and rock streets around town. Is that true?
It is absolutely true. We, we use the grader basically citywide, and, and it does a lot of heavy lifting on the steeper terrains on high ground and the middle hills for snow removal. So it's, it's, it's an essential piece of equipment, or especially a growing town of our size. So yeah, it's, it's a, it's a much-needed upgrade. I, I will give everybody to, to buy a new low, I, I will give everybody to, to buy a new low, a new grader, excuse me. You're looking at about $350,000. So to be able to lease one, I think is going to be the best benefit for our community. Allow us to get a new loader as well. And, and with all the companies out there, they have these lease to own options. And, and so we can reevaluate that as we move forward through that leasing program. I do. I'm not sure if it's my place, but I did, I did want to mention that with this street maintenance fund increase, we are looking at additional staffing in this department, which is much needed. And, and I want to thank Paige and Mike and the commission. If, if this is approved, this, this would give us an additional one and a half drastically need to do all the street maintenance responsibilities necessary to provide a level of service that's agreeable to our residents.
I would say Shannon's being, being kind, one and a half probably isn't going to give him enough to do everything that he needs to do. But it is a good step in the right direction. Any, when people talk about, you know, why aren't things being done in streets? It's hardly ever a financial issue. It's almost always a personnel issue. There's just so much to do with the number of people we have that it's, it's, it's tough to get done. So that increase will help specifically help that. That's it for street maintenance sidewalks. Again, that's just on page 36. It's just the the fund that sits there in case people want to, or in case people put that on their property taxes. This improvement district, we talked about their control their whole budget on page 38. And 39. The park improvement fund. This is one of those funds that sits out there. There's actually a few different little park things that are out there. There's a tree fund. There's a couple of other funds that are out there. There's no anticipated revenue into this fund. And I think this is another one where we budget the amount and then see if we use it. Is there, is there a specific thing on this one page? There's not, no.
There is not.
That's on page 41. Law enforcement joint equipment. Faith did look that up for me really quick. That is actually the offender payments go into that. So this gets put into in like $12 increments. It's people that are paying restitution through the court is the money that goes into this. And then once there's enough money there, they can use it if need be. Gas tax. This is probably one of the biggest hits, probably attributed to coronavirus and the reduced travel in the state. There's going to be less gas tax money. So we do have to account for that as we're, as we're budgeting through. Luckily, we're still in the, the, the gas tank going up, but it's going to be less than we anticipated last year, just because of the reduced travel. There's some of the expenses on page 45 of what we're, we'll, we'll spend the gas tax money on. Again, there's very specific requirements for where gas tax money can go. We actually spent it a lot on the materials that the street department needs either to repair streets or for winter maintenance, snow removal, the ice slicer, which is probably my favorite line item in the entire budget. Think everybody should have more ice slicer. And then a lot of the chips for the chip ceiling come out of here as well. So that is it for the special funds. I'll stop there and see if there's any more questions and then we'll go on to our debt service funds. All right. No, no questions? All right. So we'll move on to debt service. Debt service is exactly what it sounds like. These are funds where we have taken debt on for the city, and this is the, the cost of servicing that debt. The 2016 fire truck, which is our newest fire truck. There's a mill levy line item for that. So that's where the revenue comes from. And then this goes to paying off. Paying off the debt service on the new fire truck. 47, this is the 2000 fire truck. Are we? We told, we've already paid that one off. Is that correct, Paige?
We did. We paid that one off in 2020.
That's right. So that one's still there just because it's got the historical on it, but.
And because there's still fund balance. That fund balance at some point can actually be used and transferred to the 2016 bond to reduce the mill levy that's necessary to service that debt.
So 5,000 is not going to reduce it by much, but it's better than nothing. Page 48. So this is the wax, West End Tax Increment District. So a lot of people forget that we have a tax increment financing district downtown. But we also have one on the West End out by PFL, actually not by PFL, it is PFL, the, and not even the entire, all three parcels out there, just the middle parcel that the PFL, the actual building is on. So they are the sole payer to this tax increment fund. Which is great. We usually work with them. There's not a, like the, you are, there's not a URA counterpart for this one. It's just the city staff works directly with the developers for PFL to figure out what they can spend the money on. Because it has to have a public benefit, the money that they do spend. They spend a lot on infrastructure, whether that's water or streets. I think we allowed them to use it on their parking lot, but they had to have a bus stop for Wind Rider that was included in the project. So we made sure there was a public benefit to it. I don't think we have budgeted what they're going to spend this on this year. I will work with their developer throughout the year to figure that out. But we always budget it, assuming they are going to spend what they can. We do have to maintain a certain balance and we make sure that we keep that in the reserve as we go through it. But that usually is worked on through the year.
We, we maintain that balance really primarily because there's one taxpayer in that. And if for some, for some reason, something happens with that taxpayer, there's no money to service that debt. So we make sure that they maintain a certain level of cash in that account so that they are always able to service their debt.
Right. Which in this case is just about 75,000 a year. There's also an SID out there, which is a different debt mechanism, but that's not included in this debt service fund. Then there's the SID revolving fund. That's still out there. Again, we're not bringing anything in and we're not currently budgeting anything out of it. Now here's the SID that we were talking about. We're at page 50 now, which is for the West End. This was sewer and water. A special improvement district, which also is just on the West End. So that revenue comes in at 34,000. We, the debt service is expected to be just at 33,000. And again, we keep about a year's worth of debt payment on that. Luckily, PFL has been very stable throughout all of this. We haven't had to worry about picking up any of the debt on that. Because the city would be responsible for the debt payments if PFL went out of business because they are the sole payers on the SID. This is the Carol Lane SID. So again, this is this one's been paid off. Is that correct, Paige?
The debt on it was, we're still collecting some of the revenue from the property owners, which is why it has a deficit fund balance.
Right. Which is why the beginning fund balance is done. But this, is this their scheduled last year payment on this one?
I believe it is, yeah.
I think so. So this was for water, I believe, and was it water and water and sewer? I don't remember. In Carol Lane, if you don't remember what Carol Lane is, it's if you take Rogers back behind the Travelodge, it's that one street. It's a unique street in Livingston. It's super wide with the street lights down the middle. If you haven't been back there to check it out, you should. It's just an interesting street. But that one should be, this is the last year of paying up on that. Which won't really affect the city budget. That'll just no longer go on the residents' taxes. There's line items for these, but I don't think there's any particular information in it that you didn't already get. Are there any questions that you have where I can scroll down to a specific line item? I don't think we even have any notes in here. I'll scroll through to make sure there's not any additional information. No, I didn't think so. Any questions on that before we move on to capital project funds? Okay. So the capital improvement fund, again. This one is sitting out there. I don't think we have. Is there a specific project associated with this one? I can't look at both the capital sheet and this one.
There is. It's the floating islands.
Oh, that's right.
The Lagoon Project.
That is correct. And that's where the money came from, correct? It's the money we set aside for that?
Yes.
Yes. So those are the CARES Act funds we've set aside available for the capital projects. We're not sure if we're going to get to it in FY22 or not, but we did budget it in case we were able to get, to move forward with the project. That's pretty much it. Library Capital Improvement Fund, again, that's for the library and they determine how it's spent. So this is a good one. This is the railroad crossing levy. You can see that we actually paid it off last year. So there's nothing, nothing for the railroad crossing will be on anyone's tax, anyone's taxes this year, although there is $11 left. So we'll have to figure out how to spend that.
That is actually, so the revenue that comes in, that, that money could be in the cess several years ago. There's just some delinquent tax revenue that tend to trickle in on this. So we never budget any revenue, but we usually get a little bit.
The revenue did end in 20, but we paid on it through last year. That was one of those where we set aside the money because for some reason the the assessments didn't match up with the payments. So we had a couple of extra payments to make, but we set that aside. So we were able to make those payments. So not only aren't we assessing, we're also not paying anything on railroad crossings in FY22. And that's it for capital improvement funds. Any questions on those? I don't think, again, there's any real additional information in the line items other than where that money falls.
I get, I do have just the one question back to what culture and recreation under library capital improvement means. I don't recall the word cap, culture being in any of our information before.
So that is just, oh, go ahead, Paige.
These are functions that are actually pre-assigned by, by the state. So the state says anything with this account number such as 4100 is general government. 42, I believe, is public safety. So this is actually just a function that is already determined by the state.
And you'll only see that in the summaries. It's the, how we break down where the money's going. So it's a little easier to see. And do we, do we even have the the library one in there? Let's go down and see if we can.
So yeah, what, so it's budgeted for 25 531? And what does that, what is that just general? What, what, what is that?
Again, this is one of those where this money has sat out there for quite some time. I remind the library every year that they have this money to spend. Should they need it, it's already been budgeted for. Should they not, they'll have $25,000 again next year that will throw in the budget. So it's not project specific.
Okay, I get it. Now it makes more sense after you explained it that way because I recall that happening previously. So thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to the enterprise funds? Okay, we start with the water fund. You can see that charges for services, we don't expect, even though with the increase in rates, the 3%, whatever, 3.3. We're only expecting a little additional money. So we should get around 1.9 million. You can see that over half a million of that goes to personnel benefits. 673,000 does go to operations, but 1.2 million goes to capital projects. So again, water and sewer are capital heavy. There is debt services, 6,000 in the water fund, which isn't much. Almost all the money goes to public works. And some to other financing uses. And working capital will end up just slightly higher than we began with this year. So that should be good. And then as far as expense, there, yeah, so in sewer. We are expecting a little more increase in charges for services in sewer. Again, most, a lot of the cost goes to personnel benefits. Capital's not quite so big in sewer this year, although there will be some projects that hopefully will go on, including the civic center, but we're not sure when that one will start. And then debt service on this one is obviously for the water reclamation facility. And that's still 780,000 a year that we're paying in debt service. Again, working capital doesn't change significantly. Solid waste. We've seen pretty good year over year increases in solid waste. We expect that trend to continue for about 2.6 million. Some of that is the, the green can program, which will actually have revenue for the first time. Then expenditures, 676,000 in personnel, 1.6 in operations. So this one is more operations heavy than capital heavy, although there can be large capital purchases if we're getting a new truck or loader or other items specifically for solid waste, but most of it is going to be for actually the cost of disposal from the transfer station being hauled over to Cascade County. Again, almost all the public works and a slight increase in working capital, but not significant. But we did at least increase the reserve there a little bit.
Can you pause for a second before you leave public works?
Sure.
So, okay, so I think public works is one of the interesting categories. If I am remembering, because I'm looking at like the personnel and benefits. Some are going up, one is going down, and I think these folks get paid for more than one set of funds, right? Some as general funds and some as enterprise funds. Is that right?
Almost all the public works is enterprise funds. But different workers can get paid for more than one fund. If it's a roaming crew, they do get some money from general fund. But yeah, there's a mixed mash of funding sources when we're looking at a different person.
So I'm trying to reflect on what we talked about last time and putting that together with this picture. And I'm wondering like, what do wages look like for staff and public works is probably one of the bigger departments, which is why I'm thinking of it right now. I don't know when we can have that conversation, but I'm curious to know like how, because I can't remember all the general fund amounts. Like what, what does it look like for, are we giving people raises? How does that look? Are we holding steady or? Yeah. And you don't have to answer that now. You can do it at a time that fits better with this whole conversation, but that's what I was thinking about when I was looking at these numbers.
We are, this year will be a will be a negotiation year for the new the new contract. Go ahead, Shannon. You want to cover that quick?
Sure. Yeah, we're in, we're in year three of the three-year collective bargaining agreement with the public work staff. And this FY22, it was negotiated at a 3% salary increase. And we will, with the union negotiation team and the representative, we'll, we'll start those discussions later this fall, early winter.
Okay. Thank you for reminding me of that. And so we'll expect to see something different maybe next year. Like different projections or I was gonna say, or like an update after these negotiations happen, you'll probably bring it to the commission and let us know what was the potential agreement.
Yeah, you'll get the update and you'll also get the agreement itself.
I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't mean to talk over you, but you know, the commission will approve or, or accept the collective bargaining agreement.
But I would, I would expect as the other two union negotiations went, that there's going to be some, some significant increases in salaries. Just with the job market as it is right now. Just with the job market as it is right now. It's the only good news, if you want to consider it good news, is that there is additional funding sources to pay employees in public works. Because you can change rates where we can't change tax levels for employees out of the general fund. So there's at least additional revenue if we need it to bring it in.
And is that where all of the benefits are agreed upon? Also, I'm imagining like insurance benefits and things like that for every. Every uh, unionized group. Okay, thank you.
It is. Well, solid waste doesn't look exciting. This is actually a really great. I think story, if you look at it over the last four or five years, this fund was in the red for a long time and we've done significant work to bring it out. And now it is operating in the black, which is. Where you want to be. Ambulance, again ambulance is. Is benefiting from the mill levy that was passed. Without that, I, this would be a completely different budget briefing. But it has been significantly useful. If you haven't been following along, we've gotten two new ambulances already. One that just went into service is specifically a transfer. Van. It's actually very Euro looking. It looks like it should be in Belfast and not Livingston, but it's a, it's a very nice ambulance and they've already been. Already been utilizing it. Actually, my wife got to utilize it the other day, which wasn't super awesome, but great man. So, and they got her over to Bozeman in some pretty nasty weather. Ken's guys always do really great work, so we appreciate them. Personnel benefits again, and this is going to be the major cost. Operations is a major cost. Capital always some. I don't think we have a new ambulance in this budget year, which is why you can see the big difference. In. Capital purchases over the last few years, but we still have some equipment that needs to get done. And a little bit higher in the ending working capital, which is good. And they're at a good spot as far as reserve go, which we showed you earlier. All right. Any questions before we move on to the line item? Okay, you can see again, the three point three percent rate increase. Which. Ironically, you can see actually is a lot more than the twenty twenty-one budget, but less than the twenty twenty-one projected right now. I don't know if people, I think people spending much more time at home, they use more water. Because they were not traveling, they were at home more often. You know, they were cooking more at home, so. We saw an increase in water use, one of those.
Can I just give a little input into that? So when I, when I budget revenue for the enterprise funds, especially water and sewer, I actually look at historical usage. And I based that off of an average over a period of time. So that's why it looks like it. It's going down from what we projected in FY twenty-one, but if I actually look at historical usage. That's where the three point three percent comes from and how that revenue is calculated instead of just taking. Last year's budget number and then making it three point three percent higher. I put a little bit more effort into it than that. And I feel like we get a better reflection. I, I want to say in FY twenty, we were, we were far off from that. That was a weird year. Super wet summer, and so we just didn't have the usage that we thought we were going to have, but. It's worked pretty well so far to give us better, more in line with what we're actually bringing in for revenue.
And I would expect less usage this year unless it's super dry. And then you get the, the lawn watering, we pick it up. But again, not a huge increase in revenue projected. And then we can scroll down to wages and salaries. Two hundred and sixty-six thousand, you can see in the water for water services. Again, that's a large cost and it should be. And here we are, page seventy, seventy-eight. Again, the waters portion of. The, the cold storage at the Star Road upgrade, the one million gallon booster. Generators at the D Street well and a pressure reducing valve. I forget where it's a pressure reducing valve going, Shannon.
To be honest with you, I'm drawing a blank. I, I'm not sure if that's a typo. I'm not. I don't, I don't have any plans for a PRV. I know, I know, we're looking at two generators. One for the D Street, one for the booster, booster station. But I'm not, I'm not sure what that PRV is.
That might have been left over from when we connected the two million to the one million.
It may be. I, I don't. Don't have plans and I can tell you that ninety-three thousand for all that plus a PRV probably is not enough money.
All right. So you can cross PRV off there.
Because I think that reducing valve, that was a hundred thousand alone, wasn't it?
It was expensive. One fifteen.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's been gone.
Uh, you can see there is a Sixth Street Water Project in here, which is. A five hundred and fifteen thousand and then Seventh Street for five hundred thousand. So that's the, the infrastructure projects that we're looking at this summer. Hopefully we can get them in for that amount. We'll see when we go out for bid. Obviously, this is just our budget. It's not an actual, we don't have a contract yet with anybody.
I just went back and looked at Shannon's notes. It's PRV fencing.
Oh, we got cut off. We ran out of space. It's PRV fencing. Because that pressure reducing valve is where the new dog park is going. Is that right, Shannon?
It is.
Yeah.
Yep. And this is all part of our. Uh, Infrastructure Act of two thousand and eighteen and our emergency preparedness planning and. Providing additional security at our well and critical infrastructure locations.
Oh, the fencing was on there. It was just wrapped around to the next line.
It fell down on the next line. It looked like it was on the next line item, but it wasn't. All right, so page eighty, we get into sewer. You can see the three percent increase there.
Michael, can I ask a question on water?
Go right ahead.
So what is the? Uh, what would the rate in, say if we didn't have a rate increase, can, you know, in the past, we've done some different. Kind of analysis, like if we increase it by one percent, two percent, three percent. Zero percent and some of the differences that it has to the fund balance. Could we do that a little bit? Because that's always a question as to why. Or people ask us is why do we have to increase it? So we, I want to be able to give them as much as possible.
Sure. Well, you'll get these in a different format when we actually do the rate increases and you'll, there'll be more information like that. But do you have anything? Do you have that available page calculation on that? Not right now. We can certainly get it to you.
I, I would, just in this particular fund for FY twenty-two, even with a three point three percent rate increase. We're running over a half million dollar deficit, which is being absorbed by. Healthy working capital that we've carried forward, but obviously something like that isn't sustainable.
Right. You can see that on page seventy-nine. The five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar deficit. I guess roughly, can we say that each percent's around a hundred and thirty thousand roughly?
Each percent in revenue is fifteen thousand, one seventy-six.
Fifteen, yes. So fifteen, so. About forty-five thousand. So I guess you're looking at forty-five thousand total, which would take the. The deficit to over six hundred thousand for this year.
Okay, and then. What are we getting for that? What are, so we can tell or talk to our. Our people, what do they get?
Uh, so you get the upgrades to the equipment we talked about, the, the generators on a couple of the, the booster. Which right now does not, if lost electricity, would not be able to go as well as a D Street well. And then you get the two. Water projects in Sixth and Seventh Street, really. I mean, it is, you can take it from anywhere. You can't really take it from personnel. Uh, but the capital projects is really where the money is spent. You have a million dollars in water system upgrades.
Great. Thank you. That's helpful.
Shannon, I think you should be in on that and talk about how many water mains you fixed in the last couple of years. Obviously another thing.
So, yeah. If I may, Madam Chair, I, I just, the Sixth and Seventh Street Water Project was something that we designed. And bid actually three years ago and with, with the amount of work we did in the downtown in two thousand and eighteen, we just didn't have the budget. To do that, but this is a significant project. In the fact that it's upsizing four inch water mains to eight inch water mains and. I think we all probably can relive the, the three water main breaks in eight days, two February's ago. Where our main in Park Street was out of service for a considerable amount of time and, and the fire flow protection in that. Part of town was severely compromised. So it was an important project then. It's even a more important project now and the fact that our growth. Policy really is encouraging infill and with the new ADA ADU zoning ordinance change. Certainly we're seeing a lot more ADUs in that part of town and I'm sure the fire department would appreciate having adequate fire flows. In, in the old part of Livingston. So this is the first of many four inch water main replacement projects that we have slated for, you know. South of Park Street.
I am really.
A lot.
Can I, can I say something also and ask a question? I'm really glad to see the increase in capacity in these existing lines because you're a hundred, I'm like a hundred percent agreeing with you, Shannon. It's absolutely, it's absolutely meaning the community where they are in terms of wanting more density where we already have housing. I wanted to ask, does impact fees for development in these areas offset some of those costs?
Absolutely they do. And. Any project that is eligible as a capacity expanding project, certainly Mike, Paige and I look at that and. Try to maximize the available impact fees. For those projects and you know, a perfect example is. The Fifth Street Project that I'm hoping as of right now, if you go out and try to drive across Fifth Street Railroad tracks, the road will be open and. We have no plans of closing Fifth Street for the foreseeable future. But that Fifth Street sewer upsize was paid by impact fees and. I really appreciate the commission increasing our impact fees last fall and it's, and it is making a significant difference as a funding source for capacity expanding projects. Um, if I, if I may, again, on the water, I understand the challenges obviously with rate increases, but. I do want to, to bring up that we are still well, well below the state of Montana target rates for utilities. Specifically for water. We're definitely over on sewer and that's why we are eligible for applying for. Treasure State Endowment, SRF loans, CBDG rural development. Because we, we are above our, the state's target on our sewer, but not on our water. So until that happens. Our rate payers will be paying for all the projects in Livingston.
Thanks, Shannon.
Any other questions for water? Okay, for sewer, again, we talked about three percent increase in rates for sewer. So total revenue around three million dollars. Again, there's going to be there, the sewer's portion of the cold storage at Star Road. As a capital project. The sewer department salaries and wages are split out a little differently because they also have the. The WRF crew that's down there running that are not part of the sewer crew as far as the guys out working on the street. So you see it split up a little more. And you can see some of these capital outlays, which I, I mean, are fairly important, especially as we work on the INI study. Now that we've completed that, we need to figure out how to move forward to fix the problems. It's great that we put in a twenty million dollar water reclamation facility, but if we spend all the capacity treating Yellowstone River water that's leaking into our sewer, it really wasn't a great investment. So. And that will probably be one of our priorities in the sewer fund is to try and at least identify the main problems with infiltration and see what we can get fixed there. You can see lift stations are also going to be another issue across. The sewer fund, both by the hospital and by Matt's meets. Both of those lift stations are going to have to be upgraded. I think, do we have just the hospital one in this budget, Shannon?
No, this is Centennial Lift Station and that's being driven by the develop. Um, down on Love's Lane and, and south of the interstate.
Right. So that, that's going to be a significant upgrade that needs to happen. Just how many, how many new units of just the condos have gone in between last year and this year?
Well, we, we had thirty-six units that came online last year and I believe there's forty-eight units currently under construction. I think with the certification of occupancy expected sometime in September and. I just got word from Jim Woodhall. Last Friday that they're already planning to, to build out, full build out of the Eagles Landing Development. And so there'll be another four units that'll be starting immediately.
So that's eighty-four units already plus forty-eight to be expected shortly. So you're talking what, a hundred and thirty-two or something like that? Public math is always dangerous. A lot. It's a lot of units down there and that lift station is responsible to get all that back into our main trucks running back through.
That's great because we're always hearing that there's not enough housing. So that's great that. This project that was decided upon a while back is making some more housing.
It is. And, and luckily I think we plan to keep up with the infrastructure to go with it, which was. Which is kind of important. So strong work there, public works guy.
Well, and, and just so everybody knows, the clinic lift station, that's, that's our oldest lift station in the city. Um, unfortunately, we've had some high liability claims. Against that. So we're, we're going to do a, a major update on the operational system there and even look at. Um, a possible backup generator for that, but. That'll, that'll be a huge improvement and is those that are aware, there's some pretty major upgrades being done to some of the buildings in that area that are connected to the clinic lift station.
So you can see again, here's the debt service payment for the, the work. It, it hurts to pay three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in interest, but it's a good project. So we'll continue to make those. USDA would probably be upset if we didn't as well. We're spending almost exactly what we bring in in the sewer. We're, we're budgeting right now for a forty thousand dollar deficit. So not significant. In the amounts that we're talking about in the sewer fund. Any more sewer questions before we move on to solid waste? Alright, so again. We're projecting pretty much what we brought in, in FY twenty-one, except that you can see the green cans is a significant increase here to two hundred and two thousand. Transfer station revenue has continued to increase. Just the amount of construction waste that comes through is impressive. You know what tonnage we're looking at a week right now, Shannon?
Well, I can tell you that we're, we're, we're filling four trailers and leaving a trailer on the floor each night. So we're, we're, we're approaching a hundred and fifty tons per day and we just opened up this past Saturday was our first. Uh, six day a week schedule and so we are gearing up for a very, very, very busy summer. As a matter of fact, we're having a meeting with Republic Services to. See if they can actually get us a fifth trailer, which. see if they can actually get us a fifth trailer, which I would have thought eight years ago was unheard of. But that's what we're looking at needing to be able to dispose of the demand, not only from county residents, but all the, all the city residents as well.
If you had to throw just a guestman out there, what, what percentage of the transfer station capacity are we using today?
Oh, we're, we're above 90% at this point. Yeah. It was not designed to, to have 150 tons. We're, we're able to do it, but we're, we're, we're very near maximum capacity.
And, and when we reach maximum capacity, while personnel is an issue here, we're just talking actual infrastructure of the building itself and possibly of Republic's ability to haul it away. So we will, with any significant amount of growth at all, we will be looking at having to come up with a new project to figure out how to increase the transfer station capacity because we're, we're approaching maximum. And there's a few options for that and we're going to have to go through those as we go forward. But that's probably a, I don't know, three to five-year project that we're going to have to look at. Hopefully we have that long.
And if I may, I, I just want to get on my soapbox here a little bit and just commend the solid waste staff. When we, when we move to these six-day-a-week schedules now till basically the end of October, first of November, we don't have any additional staff to do that. So you're, you're looking at solid waste, at least two people that are now going to be working six-day work weeks until November. And their work ethic is second to none. And I'm very proud of that they can do that. It's, 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 it's a lot to expect from people to do that every summer. So we know, we're going to have to continue to look at additional staffing in the solid waste department, especially with the growth of, of residential commercial collections, the green can collection as that expands and then all the over the scale. It's a lot for six employees and to run the scale, the scale house.
You know, and I will, and we, we're not talking necessarily the cemetery crew in this one, but I will point out that we are working staff across the board pretty much to the maximum extent possible. When Shannon spends three hours weed eating the cemetery to get it ready for Memorial Day, we pretty much have every staff member available out there doing their job and some other people's jobs too. And so we just, we're, we're going to have to get comfortable with the fact that we're going to have to spend more money on staff if we want to continue to get these things done. Staff is going to be the limiting factor moving forward for most operations and staff is going to get more expensive. We're going to have to spend more just to keep the staff we have. And then we'll have to spend more than that to get the additional staff we need for the services that people expect. And so we're going to have to figure out where that money comes from. And that's, that's the challenge moving forward. For, there you go. That was my soapbox. See Shannon, I have one too.
Thank you.
Can we just acknowledge for a minute that Shannon's the director and he's running a weed eater? And that's pretty cool and pretty humble of you to literally get in the weeds with your staff. So, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. And I, and I will tell you that it, it might not be the, the best use of my time, but it goes a long way to actually understanding what, the challenges that our crews face on a day-to-day basis. And having a lot of pride in our cemetery prior to Memorial Day really was the driving factor. And, and it, it, it takes a mountain of people to make things happen. And, and we, we, we needed mode and got the cemetery prepped in, in about two and a half days. And that's probably never happened in the history of our cemetery.
And it looked great. We were there on Memorial Day. It looked wonderful.
It is, it is awesome that Shannon is willing to go out there and do that. And it's horrible that we're in a spot where he needs to. And, and that's, and that's where we're at as far as budgeting goes. And we've talked about it and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but that, that is going to continue to be our challenge moving forward. And it's normal, almost every department. Solid waste. Again, bringing in a little more revenue than we're spending, which is great because we do need to build up that, that reserve a little higher than it currently is. So any questions, any more questions on solid waste before we move on to ambulance services on page nine?
My, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just, I know Paige has a lot of numbers to, uh, put in this budget, but I, I, I wanted to let the commission know that we did budget for the automated gate during this next budget year for the recycling center. So that's, that's a portion of the capital outlay that's budgeted in solid waste. And we are getting two, at least two more roll-offs too. So that would bring our inventory of roll-offs up to, to eight, which we're, we're seeing, I have a, is, there's a large need for roll-offs in Livingston right now.
I'm excited to hear about that because I was there today and went through the gate and I thought about it. And I'm glad you gave us that update. It, uh, I think it's a project that's been a long time coming and I'm glad we were able to budget for it.
And at the end, we will look at the capital sheet and you can find a lot of the details on the capital items on the capital, the, the separate capital sheet. But we'll go over that once we get there. Ambulance services, again, this one's a, uh, budgeting for revenue is an estimation game just because a lot of it depends on the number of calls we get. But we are looking, ambulance also along the board with everything else has been increased. Excuse me. And so we're looking at somewhere around 2.3 million in revenue for the ambulance fund. And that's to include the mill levy. Ken, do you have anything specific you want to touch on, on your budget?
All right. I find the unmute button. Nothing really. There's some capital expenses. We're going to buy some stuff this year that will upgrade our capability in the field, some ultrasound units and a couple of IV pumps and things like that that'll, those will be the major expenses this year and ongoing maintenance of our two older animals has seemed to be causing us a slew of new problems on a regular basis. And if we can go back to what we were talking about a few minutes ago about employees and wages, there's a posting today that came out for a rookie firefighter position with Bozeman Fire for a non-paramedic position. And the starting wage is slightly less than what I make right now. And that's for somebody with no experience. So what Mr. Carlos was saying about hiring being a problem, it's going to be a problem.
Can I ask a question about that?
Certainly.
Specifically with the fire department, I think it's union, right? So there's all these like rules about raises and things. So first of all, thank you for choosing Livingston, right? If nobody told you that today, thank you for choosing Livingston when you could probably be making more somewhere else. But also, how do we address that challenge when we're also bound by you, by union regulations?
Well, we negotiated a very good five-year contract last year. We're just finishing off the first year of it. That's one way to do it. I'm not sure that there's a good answer to being competitive with places like Bozeman. There, there was an article last week for a chief of a department, much like Park County, that has two paid positions. And their chief is making $120,000 a year. So I, I have no idea how we can be competitive with that.
The, the short answer is we can't, we, we can't be competitive with those numbers. We do not have the tax base to pay for them. Because of the tax structure in Montana, it's kind of the grow or die model. And if you don't bring new property under the tax rules, because of the limit on the increase in on properties that already exist, we're just, we, we can't be competitive. Because you have to grow at the rate Belgrade or Bozeman is growing to be able to pay those kinds of wages. It's without an additional source of revenue or a different source of revenue, whether that's a sales tax or a resort tax or a state or local income tax, whatever the vehicle is. There's, there's really no options for us to increase salary, salary for employees except to cut programs elsewhere. Whatever that is.
So I would like to see, when we get to the strategic plan conversation, see some potential things that we could be pushing the state on so we can meet this demand. Because growing at the rate of Gallatin County is like not feasible for anywhere. I mean, they're like one of the fastest growing communities in the country for their size. So it would be great if we could, even if it means we have to take it to the state and start thinking about it now, I would love to see some options to support the people that live and work here. But I'm just one commissioner. So, um, but I think it's really important that we figure something out.
Yeah, I'd like to throw in too that we also don't have a $740,000 median house price either. So the, the cost of living, we're not really comparing apples to apples because the cost of living, well, I'm sure it, it, it doesn't make it equal. And I'm not trying to say that, but it does add into the equation as far as a decision on, on where a person would want to work. Thanks.
But, and I think that's why you'll continue to see more people living here and working there. Because you get those wages and our housing prices, which will only last so long depending on supply. And then we'll probably see an increase in housing prices. But I should say a greater increase in housing prices because obviously they're already increasing significantly.
But the reality, I was just going to say, and the reality is like the folks that work here can't all afford to live here. So, um, while it's not a direct comparison, there's some pretty significant problems that, I mean, even since we moved here five years ago, it was already underpaid for the cost of living. But like folks are getting underpaid for the cost of living in this community. And in five years' time, housing has got a lot more expensive and wages are not matching that same increase. So, um, that's just the reality of where we are. It's getting worse, not better, even if it's not as bad as Bozeman.
And it's not, it's not as bad as Bozeman yet.
No, but they also have a better housing market overall. It might be more expensive like Warren was saying, but they have more to offer. And we have multiple employees that live in Bozeman and come over the hill. And then we lose them every two to three years because they can work and make more and yet have a rental that's reasonable.
Well, that's probably that's probably the area where we're hurting the most is people that were, live in Bozeman and work in Livingston are usually living in apartments. Then we just don't have an inventory of apartments here. We don't have that high-density housing that either young people starting out or, or people working in lower wage jobs can access. It's just not here. I mean, there's a few, but they're, most of them are either rent assistant or, or whatever. I think I saw last week on Craigslist, a room for rent. It was a room. It wasn't a, an ADU that had a kitchen or anything. It was a shared room in a house and they were asking seven or eight hundred bucks a month for a room in a house. So, yeah, and I think it was a shared bathroom. So that's where we're at in, in the rental market.
That sounds like we're on our way to Bozeman, on our way to be in Bozeman.
Which it makes it hard for recruitment. It really does. But we are not going to solve the housing problem tonight. So permanent funds, although Commissioner, I was going to tell you, I do have a paper on the tax structure in Montana and some of the options that can be, can be used all the way down to local, local income tax actually. So I will send that to you. Anybody else that would like, I'll just send it to all of you, just in case you want to read it. I apologize. It's actually written by me. So it's nothing great, but it does outline a bunch of the, the tax structures in Montana and compares it to other, other states and other places that have different options. So it's at least a place to start. Please don't correct my grammar. Permanent funds, perpetual cemetery fund. Again, that's just the, the standard fund that's out there. It always looks great because we have 250,000, but we can only spend the interest on it, which is what makes it a perpetual fund. If we were spending more than the interest, then it wouldn't be in perpetuity. I love briefing this one, just so I can say perpetuity. So we're looking at, at $1,500 that then gets put into Shannon's budget to maintain the cemetery, which is nowhere close to what it costs to maintain the cemetery, but it does offset costs just a little. So that is the end of the actual funds themselves. So I'll pause here for any questions on the funds. And then if you'd like, we can look at, at some of the capital projects. But I'll, I'll stop for questions first. Okay, hearing none. Do you, would you like to go ahead and go through the capital projects? That's what you'd like to see? Yes.
I would.
So going through this, I, I'd like to emphasize a couple of things. One, everything in 2022 is budgeted for. Anything beyond 2022 is not budgeted for. And so we're, we're not asking for approval for, for projects in 23, 24, 25 or 26 because they're not actually budgeted yet. But all of these 22 projects are included in the capital outlays that you saw in the different budgets. So this year, you can see the Green Acres Park gazebo, the Lagoon boarding islands. So that when I kept struggling trying to figure out what these were, this is where all the information is. Barely Andy's improvements got 8,000. The Miles Park fence got 10,000. Parks Master Plan improvements is 10,000. The reservoir dog park has 55,000. Resurface the tennis courts, which is 14,500. I will point out here and Shannon can correct me if he thinks I'm wrong on this one. We have a lot of agreements with different organizations throughout the city to share the costs in maintenance of, for certain things, whether that's the baseball association, the softball association, the tennis association, LYSA, the soccer association. We are starting to see a lot of those agreements fall through and our partners not meet their financial responsibilities that they signed up for. The, the exception to that is LYSA who meets all of their financial commitments and then some, um, LYSA has done an excellent job. So I would expect the city to have to pick up more and more of that as we move on. I think an example of that is just the, the skate park itself. I don't know if the skate park board actually exists anymore. I don't know if they've met. I certainly don't think they're doing a lot of fundraising. So the second phase of landscaping of the skate park pretty much has fallen on the city to, to finance, to, to, to provide the funding for that. And I would, I would expect more of that as we move forward. We do have 10,000 for a sack to a park swing set. And then you can see the 11,000 for skate park landscaping right there. Then we also have skate park ceiling, which is another 55, another 5,500. So we're spending a little over 16,000 on skate park this year. Then some of the city hall window blinds, we're upgrading wireless controllers. So these are some IT costs, capital outlays. New VMware host, IT uses that to set up our machines. So that's straight IT. LED replacements of, of lighting in our buildings, it's 5,500. And then the law enforcement hallway flooring is 1,000. These are in the firefighter fund, firefighting fund is the nozzle, 2,100 bucks for a nozzle and 21,000 for the breathing units. And then 6,000 on radios, 50,000 for, this is now law enforcement patrol vehicle, the K-9 vehicle. And we've talked about these already and some money for the police department remodel. That's money for them to reconfigure the spaces that they're going to move in once the city attorney and myself move out to make it usable for them. And then these are And then these are, we talked about the Star Road, the cold storage remodel, come out of all these different funds to come up with the 40,000. So we spread that across the entire city, across all the funds, because that is the basically going to be the new archives for the city. Because we're out of space in the Shane Center and we've had two separate incidents of water leakage destroying city records in that area. So we are creating our own storage space. We have the, the money for the sec to we apart flag budgeted. I don't think we're going to get to that this year as we look to increase, improve that entire area and turn the triangle into a little nicer area with irrigation and electricity. So that'll probably get rolled over into the next fiscal year. UPS batteries, I believe that's for dispatch, which is an important function that is grant funded, but it is 19,000. Move on to page 97. ADA sidewalk improvements, we talked about 100,000 sewer video software generators and panels, centennial lift station. The water accumulation facility roof, drying beds, paving, cardboard compactor, roll off container. Shannon mentioned those. That's a a service that he started in the last few years that's been pretty popular. And so that will bring in revenue, but there is an upfront capital cost. The automated gate that he talked about in two different funds here for about 55,000. Snow plow attachment, you can see spread across water sewer and streets. The pneumatic roller, the pickup booster station generator. Again, the sheep's foot roller, we talked about those fencing, fencing is always expensive. And then Shannon, can you touch on this cold storage so you could actually explain it better than I can?
Sure. It's, it's another item that I've been asking for, for eight years and anybody that wants to come out and take a tour at our public works facility and see the millions of dollars of dump trucks, equipment, loaders, backhoes that we have. This is really just to keep them out of the, out of the weather and, and give them longer longevity. So we're going to split that between the street department and both water and sewer to, to do a cold storage pole barn type structure.
Again, that's, that's a really good investment to keep the equipment we have in good shape and to make it last longer. We talked about the backup generators in the sixth and seventh street water projects. All right, Ken, pronounce that for me. Lear, learning scopes.
Ringoscope. Video learn goscan be for when we're intubating patients, we can do the video, do a video of the as we're doing the intubation and then we can capture that video and send it to the hospital to prove to them that the tube placement is correct and stayed in place.
There you go. Larry goscapes. Ultrasounds, the B and Clark is at the Gray Jump Store again. More current gutter growth plan priorities. The pedestrian bridge, PR, the loader Shannon was talking about, the grader he was talking about, INI improvements and URA priorities. So total capital outlay for the year is about $4 million. Which is a healthy capital outlay budget. But necessary as we look to upgrade the infrastructure that we have and, and keep ahead of, keep ahead of repairs. What I love about capital spending is it's all investments in the future. Everything we're buying is going to be available for many years, if not for decades. And that's how we look at it when we plan it and design it is that it should be available for decades. That's a lot of capital improvements. You can see the future out year improvements as well. You can go through those and look, and look through them at your leisure. None of those are being asked to be approved in this budget year, but it will give you an idea of what we're planning for future, for future years. Any specific questions on the capital outlays that we, or just items you'd like to talk about?
I would. So looking at the list, the only thing on the list that I have not had any conversations about or heard about what is the gazebo? What? What is that project about? What? I just haven't heard of it. And I'm on Parks and Trails as well as we annex Green Acres and I haven't heard of the plan for 25,000 on the gazebo.
So it's, it's basically doing a picnic shelter similar to what we did at the Mike Webb Park near the Splash Park.
Are we doing just, I guess I haven't had that in a conversation. So is that just a normal process of when we do improvements on parks or at, are we trying to add those throughout the community into some of our parks or what is the, because I know like Katie Benel Park, I'm not sure if they have a gazebo or shelter.
There's, there's two small ones at Katie Benel.
Small ones, yeah. And then so we're just adding that, just trying to make sure because I know I'm going to get a question about this. Because I truly haven't heard about the
Madam Chair, I, I have spoke with, with Jean Marie on this. I mean, Jean and I get together at least probably a couple of times a year and, and talk about my capital improvements that are parks related. And so, you know, I have talked to her about this and, and this was, this was, I think, a good gesture of, of Greenacre Park. If you've not been there, is, is a, is a beautiful park. It's, it's large. And it has very few amenities. And this is a nice way of, I think, a first improvement for that facility. And, and then as we extend sewer into that, I think we need to look down the road of, of having restrooms and as you can see, a drinking fountain out there for people to have for that park.
Can I say something also?
Yeah, one sec. Yeah, let me just finish up with that. So, thank you, Shannon. I think you're right. It's a beautiful park and there's definitely some needs to just make it more park worthy for our community. We'll just, I guess, I'm sure I'll hear from Parks and Trails and some community on this question. So thanks for the details.
Sure.
Go ahead, Melissa.
I just wanted to piggyback on that one topic. I seem to remember when Quentin and I went out to Green Acres, that there was a lot of conversation about there was a lot of conversation about a lot of things, but improvements to that area of town, infrastructure being obviously the biggest with getting off septic tanks and moving into sewer lines, but also the park did come up and there was a lot of conversation around improvements in the park. Because there's no water in that park. If I'm remembering correctly, there's, looks like they're putting in drinking fountain, but there's no toilets. And I think maybe that this was rolled into that conversation or that was part of that conversation that happened. The gazebo, like those different kinds of community structures. So it's not just an asset for the people in Green Acres, but also for the people in Livingston, just to have another place to meet, to meet their community. So it seems like it fit with conversations that I've remember whenever those conversations happen. Was that like two years ago now?
Yes.
I can't even remember. Yeah.
About two years ago.
And I don't know if you remember that too, Quentin, but it's
I do. And then I do believe they have toilets, but they're ball toilets like we have at at the Van Shell area as well. And so yeah, when we're doing the sewer project out there, that would be the time at, the time to leave stuff in for future sewer at that park. Do you still have the floor, Melissa, if you want? Otherwise I have a question.
Yeah, I have another, but why don't you go ahead? Cause I was just wanting to respond to Drell's comment about the gazebo and Green Acres.
Okay, yeah. Just real quickly, the lagoon floating islands. I thought we talked about maybe relabeling that as a lagoon improvements overall, because floating islands aren't necessarily going to take care of the problems in the lagoon. Or do I stand corrected?
So that project, so we've actually put it, that particular money aside for the floating islands, but there's a lot more to that project. But we have to find other funding sources. So we're looking at because there are the bioswales and some of the dredging that we'd like
Yeah, okay.
Find other, other funding sources. And I think we're going to properly create some kind of temporary committee on the lagoon with a lot of the stakeholders to make sure that what we come up with is what everyone is looking for, whether they want to swim in the lagoon or, or fish for trout, or just make sure that the Yellowstone watershed is clean. So there's, there's a lot more to come on that. And I would be very surprised if we actually spent that money in FY22.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's what I was looking at because I, I see that down the road and I'd say it being more of a collab or collaborative effort, just because the professionals that we have in this town deal with this stuff daily, you know. Would be great to tap their brains and stuff and then involve the schools as well. In making it a science project as well. So okay, good. Thanks for clearing that up for me. I yield.
I just had a couple other questions, Drell. If I can have the floor.
Yep, go ahead. I think you had it.
Thanks. So one was the flag in the park. It sounds like we've, or the city has moved away from talking about a very large flagpole and is instead moving to can you expand on that? It sounds like what you're moving towards is maybe just replacing the flagpole with something comparable in size to what we have now and improving that small, what do you want to call it? It's not really a roundabout. It's like a triangle about. Is that correct?
So we're not, as far as the staff goes, we're not addressing the size right now. I know the Parks and Trails looked at it, but that'll come back before you for your decision on that. This is, right now, we're saying before we put up any flag, we want to design that in an appropriate manner, one for traffic, but two, to make sure that it also has the electrical and the irrigation needed to keep that well manicured. So we'll probably revisit the, the flag size question once we actually have improved the, the area and know what it looks like.
Okay. And then the other thing, this isn't for a couple of years, but I'm curious about it. It's just a few lines down. It's police base radio Northside Hill. It's an interest, it's like, I don't know if you can see it, it's two years into the future. I'm not following this. Okay. Yeah. It's just, it's down on this page near the bottom. So can you say what that is? It's at the very bottom line, the police base radio, Northside Hill.
So there's an entire county project and Ken, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, because you can see there's also a firebase radio in Northside Hill the next fiscal year. There are improvements that need to be done to the tower infrastructure for the radios for first responders. And the, the county has a, a large project on this, but the city will probably only participate in the Northside Hill portion of it. While our ambulance crews use the, the radios out in the county, they use them on county calls. So that's really a county financial responsibility to make sure those radios work. But this is improvements to our, our radio system. So the dispatch radio system on the Northside Hill. Did I get any of that wrong, Ken? Do you want to correct me on that?
No, that sounds good. And the problem we're facing with both the fire and the police base radio bases is their age and the fact that they are facing critical failure because they're so old, we can't get them fixed anymore. So if one of those base stations goes out, then our radio communications off the north hill are pretty much done.
Thank you for sharing that update. That's all that I have right now. I yield.
Is there anyone else who has questions? And did Mel ever join us? I can see Mel.
No, he's right above you, your head there, Dora.
Well, I can't see who is on the screen because we have a, a screen grab up. There we go. All right. Well, I have no other questions. Anyone else or Michael, do you have anything to finish up with?
Um, I'll let Paige just finish up with the process from here and what's next and what you can expect. And then any, any significant changes or concerns that you guys have that we need to work on before we present this to you again. If you could present us with those, that would be great. But Paige, can you just go through where we go next?
Yeah. So after the budget workshops, obviously the next step is to have a resolution of intent to adopt the FY22 budget. We usually try and do that at the same time that we put out the resolutions for any of those rate changes in the street maintenance districts. Depending on any, you know, feedback that we get for changes, you guys might like to see the expectation, hopefully would you get it, would be to get it on next week's commission meeting, the, the resolution, although I hate doing that so rushed because I don't really have time to, to look at it. I'm just throwing documents together. So if not next commission meeting, then the following commission meeting, we'll get that final budget recommendation on the agenda.
All right. Were there any changes or information that we needed more of? For when that goes on the agenda? I don't think so.
No, it, it looks good.
Okay. All right. Is that it then?
Just want to thank can, I just want to thank the department heads. I am always impressed by the amount of information that you can come up with when we have these questions and how many answers you have off the top of your head, or at least right in front of you. So thank you for always just being available and offering us so much information. Paige, I don't know how you do it. I just like how you remember all these numbers and all of the things. So thanks for making it understandable every year. You do a good job.
And thanks for acknowledging Melissa and thank you to everyone else as well. Just one thing I noticed is I mean, often the public is, you know, nitpicks through little little items, big items that are within our budget and in particular our capital improvements or capital, I guess, purchases. And I feel like a lot of what is in here, if not, you know, 99.9% we have been discussing as a community for years. And so seeing us have to actually commit our spending seems more logical. So I appreciate that. It feels very iPad is dying. That means the meeting has to end. No, it feels like the process is right when you see it like that. So thank you. All right, that's all.
No, I agree. Great job as usual.
Okay. Well, this meeting is now adjourned. Twenty-one. Right? All right, bye.
Bye bye. Good night.
Good night.